Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Marine City Virtual City Commission Meeting, now called to order, on Thursday, March 4th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Board members, when I called your name, if you could identify the city and county that you are in. Commissioner Bryson.
Here in the City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here in Marine City in St. Clair County.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here in the City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Claussen.
Here in the City of Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Here in the City of Marine City in the County of St. Clair.
Mayor Verkaman.
Here in the City of Marine City in the St. Clair County.
I just realized I skipped Commissioner Ross.
That's okay. I am here, at my home in Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Thank you. City Manager Levin.
Here in the City of Marine City, St. Clair County.
Good. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Is Jake so moved?
Callahan, support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now we have time for public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. City Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary.
I'd like to speak at public comment, please.
Who is this speaking?
Philip Luchak.
Go ahead.
What I'd like to say is about the meeting agendas. They get posted on Monday, a few days before the meeting, and sometimes late Monday afternoon. I want to find out if it's a possibility, I just have a suggestion, that when the commissioners get their agendas on Friday morning, or their packets, is there a way that those agendas could be posted online at that time? I did raise the question with the City Manager, and she told me they don't do that, because it gives them time to remove items from the agenda if they need to. My question on that, though, if that's the case, the meetings haven't approved the agenda spot on them, why not wait to approve the agenda to make deletions to the agenda? I'm just requesting that they come out to the public earlier, so people can see what's going to be discussed, look into issues they want to look into, and adequate time to do it. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes. We need a motion to approve City Commission meeting minutes for February 18th, 2021.
Prior to discussing, or to making a motion to approve them, I'd just like to have some discussion on them. Page four of the minutes where I was discussing zoning in the area, I'd just like to clarify that I had said the entire area was Zone WM, and that's not quite the case. The, up towards the bridge there, Commissioner Hendrick had responded that there was a mix of single-family industrial and office mix. That particular plot was zoned in I-1, which is light industrial. So I did think, with honesty, that the whole area was WM, and I know that there was a movement to make all of it WM at one point in time, but some were left, light industrial and other things to, at the behest of the owners. So anyway, I don't know if it's a, it must be left in the minutes, because that's what was said, or if corrections are allowed.
They are allowed, Brian. What would you like me to correct it to?
Oh, just that particular, you could say, I thought they were all zoned WM, but after looking it up, that that particular plot in question was zoned I-1, and light industrial.
Okay.
Brian?
That's the only comment I had. Yes.
Just for the public's knowledge, what does WM stand for?
Oh, waterfront and marina.
Okay. All right. Just making that clear.
Yep. That is indicated on the zoning map of record listed on our city website, which is what I've referenced to look these up.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
You need to second that motion. Bill Claussen will second that motion.
Brian, did you make a motion to approve it as amended then?
I did not, but I will make a motion to approve it as amended if no, there are no further amendments.
And Bill, you wanted to second that?
Yes.
Thanks for the support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we've got the consent agenda. We've got, one, two, three, three things on the consent agenda. Quality of life grant at the Mariner Waterfront Accessibility. It's a project that's going on at the Mariner Park. Marine City Festival Maritime Days. We're looking at the date only, because that's obviously still up in the air, and then the Marine City Festival, Music in the Park. Those three things. So I need to, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda letters A through C.
Support, Brian Ross.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now that we're down to financial business, expenditures including payroll for $407,328.38. Any questions, concerns, discussion?
I have one question. This is Commissioner Hendrick. Elaine, that $75 for the new app for the cameras, is that per year, or a month, or what?
No, that was just a one-time cost.
All right. And I see there's another bill for Wade Trim. Are we pretty much finished with Wade Trim?
We had a conflict with a project, the Project Control Engineers is working on a development, and they can't do their own work, so we'll be utilizing them for that development.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion to approve expenditures.
This is Commissioner Callahan. I make a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll for $407,328.38.
Is Jake, support?
And we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We don't have any unfinished business, so we're moving down to new business. CTV proposal for 260 South Parker Street. Elaine, you want to talk about this?
Sure. This is a quote that I received from Paul Dingeman for installing equipment over at 260 South Parker for our new chambers for City Commission. This is probably a little outdated now, at this point, so I would have to believe that some of the pricing could come down a little bit further. What you've got in here is four cameras, and then the system to control them. We will need to have an updated system, because what we currently have right now is just one camera run on an iPad, which, to have a multi-camera system, you're going to have to have some equipment to be able to switch them, and a computer system. One of the other things on here is three 85-inch monitors, two for the audience, and one for commission. That's something that, I'm pretty sure that those prices have gone down quite a bit, and I'm not sure if we need to either have that many or that size. Paul Dingeman is on the line, and he is available to answer any questions that you might have regarding this proposal.
Paul?
Yes.
Are you there?
I'm here.
Hi. Do we need three 85-inch TVs? I mean, could we get down to two, front and back, or one on the side?
Yeah. What I've found in other municipalities is that, for example, when you have the audit, people come in and do the presentation. They can click in their laptops to the, to the screens, and the public can see the presentations easier that way, with a larger screen. I just purchased from my supplier, three, or four 50-inch screens, at $326 apiece. So as you, as you alluded to, the prices are coming down. So as we get closer to the date of installing this equipment, that we can, you know, make our very best buy for the, for the city. But I think, I would like to see three, we could probably get by with two. And this, this equipment will give us the capability of streaming, if we want to stream, that we can put it up on Facebook from the, from the council chamber, commission chambers. So it has a lot of possibilities, and it's what they call PoE equipment. It's power over Ethernet, so that we don't have to run electric cables to the cameras, and it's just, it's good technology.
I was just curious about the number of TVs, but, you know, hey, you're the expert, more the merrier. And honestly, it doesn't seem like the price for a 50-inch TV, I mean, good grief, you know, I remember when they were $1,200 for, you know.
Just amazing.
So that's, yeah, yeah. Anyone else have any questions for Paul, for the CTV proposal?
Yeah, Commissioner Hendrick, hey, Paul, I mean, you and I go way back on this whole issue, don't we?
Yeah, yeah. Right there in the guy center.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We were sitting side by side all those years. I'm kind of concerned about the 85, the 85-inch, three of them.
No.
And is the desk something special, or can we provide that?
Oh, no, no, that's nothing special. It's just a desk. I wonder if it's been there a couple hundred bucks, or something? Yeah, 200 bucks. This quote is really, I don't know, when did we make it? Last fall, I guess we put it together. This is a, what you call a not to exceed, I would say, and it'll be much less than that.
Yeah, because even laptops are way down. I mean, you get them really, really cheap, so, yeah, I guess I would like to cut at least one of those monitors out, if you can deal with just two.
That's fine. That's fine.
But what are you going to do with the stuff that's over at the fire hall?
Well, the only stuff we have at the fire hall is a camera and the microphone. All of those microphones will be utilized at the new building.
What about the box that you got mounted on the wall over there?
No, no, that's the cities. That's the city of Marine Cities, for the audio in the, in the chamber itself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then I'll direct that at you, Elaine.
Now, I would suggest that there's wireless microphone equipment there. The only thing I think you need to move, if possible, and we could probably just put that in this package, is speakers in the ceiling, so the audience can hear the commissioners, and an small amplifier, and that should take care of it. You should have no expense for that. We'll just put that in part of this quote.
Okay, because there's a big box mounted on the wall, and the fire department now is putting in camera systems, so if you guys didn't need the box, they were looking to try to refurb that for the cameras.
And that's a discussion for Elaine and I to talk about whether you even want to maintain that system that's there. It's all wireless mics, and you haven't used those in years.
Okeydoke, that's all I got. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, this is Commissioner Callahan. Paul, explain again the reason why you would want to go with the three monitors, the big ones?
Two, where did I have the mic drawings here? Two behind you guys, so the audience could see on the right and the left, and then one, the third on the, the east wall of your chamber, so you can see the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
So I need a, a motion to approve this proposal.
This is Commissioner Callahan. I make a motion to approve the proposal for the, calling this, I'm sorry, the CTV proposal for 200 South Parker Street, not to exceed $13,588.15.
Is Jake, support?
And we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler. Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we're now coming to the Project Control Engineering Proposal. Elaine?
This is follow-up to an agenda item that we had at our last meeting, which was the Infrastructure Subcommittee recommendation to move forward with these two streets, Union and South Main. As part of that, Project Control Engineers, John Monti is on the Zoom call, if you have any questions for him. This is for their engineering services for the project. And we would just be looking for an approval of the $49,300 not to exceed for the lump sum fee.
John, are you there?
I am. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, John Monti.
How are you?
Good, thank you. You want to just briefly explain this a little bit, and then we'll...
Sure, I can. What this is, is for the engineering services that take you through both of the projects, both the Union Street and South Main. So what we do is a topographic survey, we design the improvements, both the water main and the road restoration, obtain the permits, identify all the utilities that are, that are marked, so that they're on the drawings. We take you through, prepare the plans and specs, go through the bidding process, make a recommendation for the bids, and then take you through the thing right to the finish, basically, to as-built drawings. So we'll do the contract administration, every piece, that's inspection of the paving work, and construction layout, and all the as-belts in the end. So this is a total project for us, from start to finish.
Anyone have any questions for John? Okay, then I need a motion to approve the Project Control Engineering Proposal for $49,300 for Union Street and South Main.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion, we approve the Project Control Engineering Proposal for $49,300.
Support, Bill Claussen.
And we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross. Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, everyone. Look forward to working with you on this.
New business, item C, Robert Klingman, Kleeman, the request to waive FOIA fees. Elaine?
Mr. Kleeman is a member on our Pension and Healthcare Retiree Board, and he has had some concerns in the past that he brought up with our previous treasurer regarding some of the eligibility for people that are currently collecting the healthcare. This was something that was brought to my attention, and in the interim, he submitted a FOIA to get some information, did provide copies of that information to you, and the costs that were calculated for that FOIA. I have been doing my own investigation into this matter, and I am working on getting an answer in this. I have been working with the attorney, I've contacted the auditor, and also been working with the actuaries to get an answer on this. However, I feel that this FOIA, it's not something that is requested as part of a board member, or, I'm sorry, as part of a body, of the pension board, or the healthcare retiree board. I think this is really a personal FOIA, and should be treated as such, and paid accordingly.
Bill Claussen, I have a question on that. Elaine, if you're on a board...
Go ahead.
Are you there?
Yeah.
Okay. If you're on a board, and you need information to do your job on the board, why would we charge for a FOIA? That, if we ask for something as a commissioner on a board to make a decision, we have to pay for that as a commission? Commissioner?
So this is not something that has been on the agenda. It was not business that was determined to be something that the board was working on at this point, though I did take it on myself. There is information that we have had to go through and review, that as part of trying to find an answer to this question, was not something that was required to do. We had to have the attorney go through and redact information, because of the fact that he was looking for information that really did not necessarily pertain to the greater issue that I'm working on. And working on it internally to work towards an answer, I don't have to do any type of redacting for personal information that are in HR files. I wouldn't have to have the attorney review that, because it's not leaving the office, it's something that, as a city manager, I have access to.
Okay, and so this is, this is a financial thing?
It's personal.
Why is it personal?
Bill Claussen, Bob Davis here. How are you, sir?
Good.
So I think what's going, I think what's going on here is that, I tend to agree with you, that if, if a board member of any of our boards or committees is, is undertaking a project on behalf of the body, and they need information to complete that project, I agree with you that a submittal for information should be free of fees, because it would be furthering the purpose, you know, set forth by, by either the board or the body. So for example, on the, on the commission, you know, if the commission is looking into something, Bill, and then, and then they kind of, and you kind of agree that you're going to try to get back to the commission with a report on something, you shouldn't have to pay to get city information via FOIA request. But this situation, and I'm very familiar with the information sought, I'm very familiar with why the information is being sought, is not, is not part of a charge that the, either of these bodies put into motion. This, this seems to be information that an individual wants for individual reasons, and we don't know yet, but there is no, there was no indication from either body, hey, you know, can you look into this, or can you get back to us, can you do a report on this? It just seems to be an individual quest for information, which is okay, which is okay, but I think at that point, to some degree, we would treat the request like we would treat from any other citizen.
This is Commissioner Hendrick. I've got a couple points here. Now, I went back and I listened to all three of the pension board meetings that were held. The last pension board meeting, and I can understand why Mr. Kleeman's asking for this information, so he was told at the last pension board meeting by our treasurer, that this issue was something that was not her responsibility, she wasn't going to look into it. He was told that he'd have to hire his own attorney if he didn't like it. He was told a lot of things that were pretty incorrect. And so I think what's happening here is because he's been told that nobody was going to investigate this, and after listening to it, and then he was cut off, and he was put on hold, and he wasn't allowed to vote for three items within this meeting, which was totally improper, I think. I can understand why he's asking for the information. So you have to go back and listen to how that meeting unfolded, and because of the way he was instructed that nobody was going to do anything, I think what he's doing is taking it on his own to try to resolve this, because of the bad information that he was provided. So I don't know if Mr. Kleeman's on the line or not.
Yes, I am, Lisa.
So can, can you, is that, is that basically what happened?
Yeah, that's basically what happened, but there's some other issues, I think, that I would like to ask right now.
Okay.
If I could.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Davis, what, what are the personal issues you're referring to?
I'm sorry, are you talking to me?
Yeah. What, what, you referenced my personal issues. What are they?
No, I didn't, I didn't reference your personal issues.
You said, you said personal issues, that there's personal issues involved in here, and I'd like to know what they are.
If you want to get into a squabble about it, we can, but what I was trying...
I'm not getting into a squabble, sir. I'm asking you a question. What are the personal issues?
Do you mind, do you, do you mind, sir, if I finish my statement?
Sure.
What I was trying, what I was trying to do with Bill Claussen was just give a general outline of what should be looked at when you're trying to distinguish between what is a body-driven request for information versus a personal request for information. And I was just, I was laying out the basic guidelines to Mr. Claussen on what should be looked at when you're analyzing a fee waiver request.
Right.
So if I, if you took it, if you took it that I implied you particularly had personal issues, I did not mean to say that.
Okay, well, that, that's the way it come across, is that I was involved in some kind of a personal issue, and that for that reason, I should have to pay. I was duly elected by the retirees to represent their best interests. Okay? And in doing that... Okay, and in doing that, now this is going on with the city manager north of two years. I have found out that there are people collecting retiree healthcare that in itself violates your own ordinance. You're breaking the law. Okay, I was told that these people may have signed a contract when they retired for retiree healthcare. And as, with all due respect to the council and the mayor, you know that a contract cannot supersede a local ordinance. You can't use a contract to get by a local ordinance no more than you can pass a local ordinance to supersede a county ordinance or a county law up the road. You know, a state can't pass laws to get by a federal law, and it goes all the way down. So we have people collecting retiree healthcare that are not by your own ordinances allowed to be collecting it. I have met with resistance for north of two years on this issue. I have heard we have to find the contracts. We have to find this. I have been very, very patient. At the last meeting, I was cut off, not allowed to talk. I was told I was out of order, which I wasn't. Did I raise my voice? Absolutely unfrustrated after two and a half years of getting this. And, but you, sir, by adding, by adding this personal, there's nothing personal about this. I was a union steward for many years, and when we got retiree for healthcare, okay, the arbitrator in Act 312 cannot split the hairs. He can't say, well, the city wants to give you ten percent or five percent. You want ten, we'll give you, I'll give you seven and a half. When the issue of healthcare retirees went before the arbitrator, he ruled, and you can quote me on this, I won't give you the healthcare, but I'm going to side with the city on their last best offer for your raise, which in turn, we lost whatever percent. I don't remember what the percentage is. But now there we start paying for our healthcare because we lost our pay raise that we wanted, and that has compounded through the years. This probably was, this probably been thirty years now that that pay raise was taken out initially by virtue of giving us the healthcare. So the police, and I'm only going to address the police retirees. They are still to this day paying for retiree healthcare through a loss of wage increases. Okay?
Mr. Kleeman?
Yeah.
Mr. Kleeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kleeman?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mayor Verkaman. We, we are here on the subject that we're trying to discuss. I mean, I understand, I understand that you're trying to give us like major background, but we are just trying to discuss the FOIA fees and the waiving of those fees.
Okay.
So I just have to kind of like direct this back down the tunnel here.
Sure, sure. But what I'm saying is that, you know, the reason, this isn't personal. This is the fact that myself and the other policemen paid for this benefit over the years. And now you have people that left the pension system as soon as we went to the independent city, city system, left it, went to the ICMA, and now they're on retiree healthcare they didn't pay for.
I, I, I think that this- I really think that the pension board needs to hear more of this discussion because you're talking about stuff that the average layperson and the city commission, you know, it takes a while to understand it. Lisa's on the board now and-
Could I, could I just, could I just give you one, 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 one last, one last thing, and I'll leave it at that? I'm asking Ms. Mayor, Mrs. Mayor and Honorable Commissioners, read the pension ordinance. Read eligibility of retiree healthcare. That's all I'm asking. Read that and you'll see that I'm a hundred percent right.
But-
Okay, I will ask her any questions now.
Like I said, this is, this is a request to waive the FOIA fee and the purpose of the FOIA, not the background of-
Yeah, well, the purpose of the FOIA is because I'm a member, I'm a member of the pension board. Who decides whether, well, he's just doing this for personal reasons, so we're going to charge him two hundred and sixty-some dollars.
Okay, hang on one second. Elaine, can you address that a little bit, please? Because I thought, I thought that you had, you had talked already about that and the reason for the request. Can you just briefly reiterate the difference between being on a board and requesting a FOIA and this incident?
Like I mentioned earlier, being on a board, you're acting as a body. Each board member is one vote on a body. So if a board decides that they want to have agenda item, they want to seek information, they're working on something or working towards a purpose, a decision, an investigation, whatever it may be, the board would be entitled to information for what we're working on. As I said, this was a FOIA that came in outside of the scope of the board. This isn't a current board action. So I have listened to the information that Kleeman has provided me, and I do have questions and issues with whether or not the eligibility is true or not because I certainly want to do my due diligence and make sure that we aren't doing anything wrong. So I have, as the city administrator, been working on finding an answer to this question. I know in the past, Mary Ellen has spoken with him about it, and she had no issue whether or not we were doing anything wrong. She felt that everything was correct, and that's my understanding of it. And with Mary Ellen having been retired and a new treasurer in the position, I thought that it was a valid thing to look into. One of the things that I do just kind of want to correct about Meghan when, when she was speaking about this not being her job, she cannot do an investigation into her department. That's what she meant, is she, she can't do an investigation into her department. Now, we've spent quite a bit of time putting together this information. You know, Meghan spent four hours and the attorney has reviewed things that, like I said, would, would not have had to been reviewed as part of my review that I would like to bring something to the pension board in regards to this.
This is Commissioner Hendrick. Let me ask one question, Elaine. If this, this goes to the, let's say we take this request of his. If it goes back to the pension board and the pension board decides that they want to see the same thing that Mr. Kleeman is seeing, then would it be a, then it would be good for the whole board, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so then maybe-
That is correct, Lisa.
Okay, so can I suggest that we let this go back to the pension board and let the pension board decide whether they can waive this or not or want this information?
The, the city commission is actually the body that would be the one to waive because this is based on the schedule of fees. What you could do is you could table this and pending further discussion at pension board, it may or may not come to this board for further action.
Here we go. All right.
I like that idea.
Mrs. Mayor, this is Robert Kleeman again. May I make one point, one more point?
Go ahead.
Okay. The city manager made mention of Mary Ellen when Mary Ellen was still at the city, okay? We had trouble with my wife's, my wife gets retiree healthcare benefits, okay? In the event of my death, I pre-decease her, which I'm sure I will. She's no longer going to, for the city, she is no longer eligible for retiree healthcare, which I understand. That's how I signed up for my pension because she's not an active participant in the pension system. That's what I was told. Okay? I was given the opportunity to come into possession of a home in Florida, in Lake, in Lakeland. And I went to the city and, well, first I called my Blue Care, not my retiree, because I'm, I'm a-
Mr. Kleeman?
Yeah.
Mr., with all due respect, um-
Well, I'm answering, I'm answering what the city manager just said. It's just going to take me a second.
Okay, I'm not understanding this, but go ahead.
Okay, okay. Well, anyways, I went to the city manager and said, I have an opportunity to have this place in Florida, but my understanding is my Blue Care network will not cover me outside of the state of Michigan. And they said, well, city, Mary Ellen said, well, go anyways, and you know, if something happens, we'll take care of you. In the past, I've had one back, I've had three back surgeries, one cost a quarter of a million dollars. And I was told by your city manager and by Mary Ellen that if I get a bill outside the state, bring it and the city will pay it. What would you do as a mayor and city council? What would you do if I walked into a council meeting with a bill for a quarter of a million dollars and said, city manager and the city treasurer said you paid us? That's what I was told. This is my frustration through the last two points.
I'm sorry, I have to step in here because I never said that. I never said that.
Okay, listen, we're going to move on. I'm making, I'm making a suggestion that we table this discussion as city manager Levin suggested until after the pension board. And that's what I'm suggesting. Can I have a motion for that, please?
You're sending this back to the pension board, correct?
Yeah, Lisa, Lisa and Madam Mayor, it's going back to the pension board for the pension board to decide if the inquiry made by a private FOIA request is indeed an inquiry that the pension board as a body would like to see.
Correct, okay. Correct, I'll, I'll-
And I'd just like to clarify, this, this is actually for the retiree healthcare board.
Yeah, it's not for the pension.
It's the same board, though, isn't it?
It's the same people, but separate board.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a label, Lisa.
All right, so is that your motion, Mayor?
Correct. All right, I'll support that. We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, moving on. City manager performance evaluation resolution number zero zero four dash two zero two one. Elaine, you want to talk about this?
Well, this is just kind of a continuation from the last resolution and the process that the attorney recommended. I did put together some goals to work on throughout the rest of the year. Obviously, with the first time doing this, not sure about timing-wise, how much I will be able to accomplish, but we need to start somewhere. So these are items that I am hoping I will be able to accomplish within this calendar year. And then going from here is what, this, this will be what you base my evaluation on. And then we work together for this resolution each following year after that.
So Elaine, this is the resolution that we would want to get done for the June-July time period, right?
Actually, this really is for the rest of the year.
Yeah, no, I mean, but according to what we planned, we were going to do a resolution mid-year and at the end of the year. And so you're, you're proposing something now to get the ball rolling because we're already heading into March to have something in place for the balance of this year.
You know, either way, if this gets approved and it's something that we use to move forward throughout to the end of the year, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's perfect. It's perfect. It's a good start. So are you, at this point, that you're asking the city commission to take a look at this and, and respond maybe at the next meeting or, you know, talk about it or add to it or delete from it or whatever?
Any of the above, yes.
Any and all of the above?
Well, I mean, just want to know your intent, right? This is Commissioner Ross. Did you mean for this to be a full year or as part of the interim?
Well, one of the things that Bob had talked about is that the, the list of goals and objectives isn't necessarily for the entire year. It's something that you, I would potentially be working on portions of it throughout multiple years. So you may see some things on here that carry over from year to year. As this is written, it says it's the goals and objectives for me in the year of 2021.
Okay.
These first documents are always the hardest. They get easier as, as you have in front of you the past three or four of these. So I think what we agreed to was that nobody wanted to wait a whole year each year to do this. So we were going to have a mid-year version of this and then an end-of-the-year version of this. And I think this is starting to serve the purpose of the mid-year 2021 process with a good early start. And I think what the commissioners are going to be forced to do now is to take a look at what Elaine has proposed. Think about your, your goals, your objectives, your policies, the things that you would like to see as a policy directive going forward for the city manager to work on. For example, you know, I didn't want to say anything at the last meeting, but you know, we, we had a very vibrant discussion about having a marina in the city of Marine City. And I thought it was a great discussion because I, you know, I tend to, I tend to think it's a great idea. But you know, at some point, at some point, would that be a, that's the kind of thing that would be an, if you didn't have a marina, and we don't, that would be a policy direction that you would want the city manager looking for every opportunity to carry out a policy directive of getting us a marina somewhere in Marine City. And it was just a nice example. So, you know, there are, there could be other things that, that you as individual commissioners have in your mind as goals, objectives and policies that you would like, you know, the city manager to keep an eye on and try to accomplish. So I think what you should do is take what she's proposed and, and work with it and, and, and remember that you're the other half of this document. As commissioners, you're the other half of this document. All you have is her half. You're the other half. So it's got to be a combination of both of your thinking. And we, we, somehow we emerge in, in April or May with a document that guides the city manager through the end of the year, and then at the end of the year, we'll revisit this.
Yeah, Bob, if I could, I just sat down with Elaine. This is just my suggestion to the other commissioners. Elaine and I sat down and had a discussion about what I wanted to see, you know, projects, what I wanted to see happening in Marine City. And so if we all had our little pet projects or, you know, goals for our city, I think that that's, you know, sit down with Elaine, kind of formulate what those are more specifically, maybe a timeline involved, and all of that goes into an evaluation. That way, it's, it's explained, it's measurable, and that's what a true evaluation is.
Yeah, I, this, Madam Mayor, couldn't agree more. And so then you as a commission, so you have your individual thinking, which is why you're elected. And then you take action as a body. So you get together with Elaine, you express your individual policies. I don't expect, and I, and I, and I hope, you're not, you're not just robots. You're all individual, smart thinkers. Wendy has different thoughts than, than Bill Claussen, and, and everybody should have independent thinking. But then when all those, all those individual thoughts are put together, then you vote on those as a collective body as being the body of thinking that you want going forward. I really think you're going to benefit from this. Madam Mayor, it's already caused you to think a little bit about what, what are my goals, objectives and policies? And you sat down and you, and you worked through them with the, with the, with the manager. And I think that's a great, great start.
This is Commissioner Hendrick. Can I ask a, because I asked a lot of this stuff before, and I know this is going to be, this particular list is going to be something that it's going to change on a regular basis pending approval of projects and things that we do throughout the year. But I think it's more than just projects. You also have to take into account what the job responsibilities are and what's going on in here. So I just like to, I already have a good-sized list. Elaine knows me enough to know that I always come up with my list. But it's not just, just our projects, but you also have to take into account, like I said, what, what should be done within the city on a regular basis also.
Correct.
Yeah, and I agree, Lisa, and some of those, I urge you all to go back and read, read the, the, the basic jobs and duties laid out in your charter, which are, you know, fairly laid out in the charter, the jobs and duties, basic responsibilities of your city manager. And she has those as number one without repeating them all. Um, and she has those as number one without repeating them all because they're, they're listed in the charter. Um, so I agree with you, Lisa. Some of these, some of these aren't big think, big, big picture thinking. Some of these are mechanical. But, but the document will be a blend of all of those.
So what's our timeframe for all of us to get the, get, get this to, put together?
Well, I know, I know the resolution that we passed called for this to be done, you know, mid-year and end of the year. You've got a nice early jump on this first one, which the first one is always the hardest. So I would think you guys should filter your information to Elaine. Elaine creates a document that goes back to the commission for review as a body, you know? I mean, quite frankly, you may not, you may not vote as a body to have all the things you see on a document included in the document. So I, I, I would think over the next, uh, um, y- you know, for the me, for maybe the first meeting in, uh, in, um, in April, maybe you could, you could all have expressed your, your, um, your thoughts to Elaine. And she could, she could then tender back to the commission a revised document based on all those discussions.
So then our goal is going to be the first meeting in April, which is April four, correct?
You, you, you may not pass it that night, but you will have a, 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 certainly a working document in front of you. That would be good to have it. And, and I would hope that by the second meeting in April, this is wrapped up and done and we're moving forward. Everybody recognizing that, you know, that the time ticker could hit in, 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 throw everything off in June. You know, we've all learned very recently how you have to redirect your thinking. So, um, we, we, and we know going into this that the document has to remain flexible and adaptive to, uh, to situations that come up. So, yeah, I, I, I think you're on a great timeline.
Hey, this is Jake. I have two questions. The first, please just refresh my memory. Are we talking calendar year or fiscal year?
Calendar year.
Okay. And then the next one is at some point after everyone gets in their prior, or their projects and what they want and what they want the evaluation to be, at some point we have to rack and stack and prioritize this stuff because there's not going to be any way that Elaine can get all of it done in one single year. So are we looking at doing that the first meeting of April?
Yeah, because you're going to have, you're going to have a, you're going to have a laundry list. We're going to have, you know, uh, Wendy's, uh, thinking is going to be in there. Um, Jacob, your thinking is going to be in there, maybe. I don't know. I don't know. I think we'll include Jacob. I, I, the board would have to consider that. Um, the mayor's thinking is going to be in there. Everybody's thinking is going to be in there. And you're right, the list is going to be way more than Elaine could do. So now you have to say, okay, so what's really our priorities as a body, not as individual thinkers, but as a body? And that's what has to emerge in April, is the body's decision with Elaine, what should she be focusing on for the balance of 2021? Then when we get to the end of 2021, we'll look back and we'll see, you know, which or more, or how many of those, you know, did receive her focus, which got done, which can we draw a line through? Which do we want to carry over? Maybe there's some of them, some of them you say, you know what? I, I, I really don't think that's a priority anymore. A- a- and now you go forward for the next six months with another document. And, and, and you, you begin to measure Elaine's performance by, by, by looking at these documents in retrospect.
No, I, I agree. I just want to make sure that at some point we go through and prioritize these things to make sure that it's achievable and everyone's being set up for success, not failure.
That is part of your goal as a commissioner.
Okay.
So Bob, are we going to, uh, cable this?
No, you're not, you're not, I would just, uh, I would just, uh, make a motion to receive and file the first draft of a performance resolution and, um, to be brought back, uh, um, to the commission, um, for further analysis in the, in the first meeting of April.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. I need a motion to receive and file the performance resolution.
This is Commissioner Ross. I make a motion to file the performance resolution as submitted to rediscuss on the first meeting of April.
This is Jake, support.
And we have a motion of support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we don't have any removal consent agenda, city managers' report. Elaine?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I would like to congratulate Officer Paul Westrich on his retirement. Um, I think he's been a very nice addition to the Marine City Fire, or I'm sorry, Police Department. And he will definitely be missed quite a bit, especially by the officers. Um, let's see. I met with a group of Friends of City Hall that worked on submitting a grant for an elevator. Uh, there are issues with the location and the leases. It is something that they are supposed to be discussing between Friends of City Hall and River Rec Teen Zone prior to moving forward with, um, either accepting a, uh, a grant or making any changes to the building. Uh, I attended a MME speaker. His name is Doug Grif- Doug Griffiths. And, uh, he was speaking on change. And one interesting thing that really kind of set with me is that there is no such thing as status quo. Um, things are either getting better or they're getting worse. So I just wanted to, to say that. Um, also participated in a webinar, uh, Winter on the Great Lakes, kind of talking about the lake's levels and how things are looking. Fortunately, things are looking a little bit better at the moment. Uh, did a walkthrough with the, uh, commissioners regarding the GEC buildings that will be on a future agenda regarding, uh, changes at that building. Uh, also have had a great time with the, uh, subcommittee for our 260 South Parker. I think it was very good that we set this group up because there have been just little issues. And it's been very helpful being able to bring the group together to deal with some of these things. Uh, we did get into a situation where one of the walls that was going to be torn out was a, uh, a, a structural wall. So working together, we all kind of came up with an alternative. There got some other little things that we're going to be dealing with throughout the construction process. And I think we're all working really good together. Um, that is all that I have for tonight.
Anybody have any questions or comments for city manager?
Yeah, Bill Clausen. I, I kind of talked to Elaine a little bit and, uh, I asked her, I thought we were going to go out for bid for grass cutting this year because I thought that we were over, putting a lot on, on Mike with the small group that he has. And, uh, I thought that we were going to go out for bid. But she kind of told me that they were working on a, on a proposal for Mike to do it again, so.
Yeah, what I can do, I, I talked to Bill a little bit about this. Uh, last year I worked with Mike and, uh, some of the other office staff, and we really did a lot of data collection and trying to figure out, is it the right thing to do for, um, DPW to hire part-time crew and, and use our existing lawn mowers to do the mowing for the city for like the parks and cemetery and things? Um, that's something that I can try and see if we can get put together for either the, the next agenda or the agenda after that, uh, ahead of the budget so that we can have a little bit more discussion on that. I think, uh, I think that would be probably helpful to everyone coming into the budget. And I know we have quite a few new people that have not really been a part of that conversation. Uh, is it the right thing to do to have staff mow versus, uh, going out to bids and having a contractor?
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Elaine.
You're welcome.
Uh, moving on to, um, Commissioner Privilege. Um, Commissioner Bryson, you can start. Um, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we were talking yesterday about ice floes and water levels. Can you just, just so that the, um, our citizens know what's going on? I mean, obviously it's a major concern. Everybody thinks that the water's going to, you know, possibly go back up again. We were talking yesterday about it. Can you just reiterate what you were telling me?
Well, I am, you know, I, I've made all sorts of predictions over the years and I've been proven wrong more than I've been proven right. So let me put that out there now. As far as water levels go, I couldn't even begin to guess. But I don't think that there's much more appreciable ice to come down through the river.
Right. That's huge. If, 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 you know, I mean, we don't know what Lake Superior is going to do, but right now it looks like Lake Huron's pretty clear, correct?
For the most part, you know, I, I didn't look at the latest satellite shots. I didn't look what's in the very northern part of the lake, but the southern part's pretty much clear. So short of something goofy happening, I think we're out of the woods as far as ice. But again, I have been proven wrong in the past.
Right. We won't, we won't hold you to it. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot either. Anything else, um, Commissioner Bryson?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendrick?
Um, yep, I just want to give an update, um, at the fire hall. Uh, we did get a camera system. Um, there, the guys are going to work, um, to put it in. And we also got help from Brenner Electric. I want to thank him tremendously. He's going to donate all the cabling and help the guys with that. And, um, also George Bucasi is going to help us set up the whole system. So it should be up and running, uh, fairly shortly. Um, the only other thing is, um, I got to agree with, uh, um, Mr. Lechak on the, uh, packets. I think we need to do a better job to get this stuff out to the public. We have an opportunity when we have our meeting to, um, amend the agenda. So I don't think if we put something on there and then we get to the meeting and it's got to come off, that that should be a big deal if we put it out there. You can always put on the, the packet that it's tentative or it's a draft or whatever. But I do think that they got a right to see stuff early enough and it's for transparency sake. And, and it gives them time, just like us, to try to look and evaluate what's in the packet. That's it.
Commissioner Callahan?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Clausen?
The, uh, the board rep, the planning commission, uh, I, uh, we haven't had a meeting, so there's nothing there. Um, so, uh, just, uh, I see that, uh, the, everything's been lifted. I believe the city manager has told me that our next meeting will be in, not vi- virtual. Will we have another meeting? And, uh, I see that our, our theater, the movie theater at the mall is, uh, started up this week. So we'll see what goes on there. Everybody support our, our creators, our restaurants, and we'll get by this. Thank you.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Uh, just like to say, uh, uh, it's good to see some spring weather. And, uh, with that comes lots, lots more people out walking and riding bikes. And be a good time to, uh, take an extra look and slow it down just a little bit. So when we, when we, uh, see the kids out running and playing, uh, that we see them before we hit them. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross?
Thanks. I actually just had a quick question, uh, for the commission regarding, uh, potential absence at a future meeting. So since we're going to be no longer Zoom, uh, into March, I accepted my cousin's invitation to be his, uh, second born's godfather. So I was going to travel to where they live to do that. And that would be the week of March first. The week, March first would be the meeting. So do I need to put in for leave now or, you know?
You mean April first, Brian?
You mean April first?
Sorry, April first. Thank you. It was April, it was an April Fool's joke. Sorry. Yes, April first. Sorry, I fast forwarded to March. And it's April, yes. April first, I will be out of the state. I mean, if it's possible to Zoom, I would absolutely be able to attend by that. But I had anticipated being out of the state for that meeting. Just curious as to how that works or letting you know now if that's fine.
Duly noted.
Well, you're, you're, you're allowed to miss a meeting, but why don't, why don't you hold that thought? And let's see how things play out through March here. And, um, you know, I've always want, I, I just want to check a few things on whether or not, what are your rights to, um, to do a call and vote on certain issues from a remote location? I'll take a look at that.
Oh, thanks, Bob. That'd be very much appreciated. That is all I had. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, we are going to go into closed session. So the city commission will enter into closed session to review legal opinion regarding consideration of the purchase or lease of real property. MCL fifteen dash two sixty-eight, D and H, there may or may not be any action taken upon returning to open session. So I need a motion to enter into closed session. Roll call vote, please.
We'll need a, um, motion first.
All right, I knew that.
Bill Clausen make a motion to go into closed session.
Support, Brian Ross.
And we have a motion of support now. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're back in open session and, um...
Chris Baxter, could you, Chris Baxter, could you, could you read the first motion? And then somebody from, some of the, from the commission, i- if, 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 if they feel inclined, could adopt your motion as read?
Surely. A motion to move forward with the Marina Grant Program in the amount of $5,000 to secure property rights for the property located at six ten Main Street and the adjacent vacant parcel.
So moved, Commissioner Kreidler?
Or Jake?
And we have a motion of support. Do we vote on this one or do we vote on it with the second one?
No, vote on this one first.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah, we're going to jumble the house.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we need, um, another motion. And Chris, if you want to...
Yep, let me just find it. Um, agree to enter into a purchase agreement with Six Rivers for the Cottrell property located at six ten Main Street and the adjoining vacant property and associated fees as outlined in the letter dated March first, 2021, for a price not to exceed the amount discussed in closed session.
Is Jake, I will make that motion.
Brian, support.
So we have a motion and support for, um, Six Rivers Land Conservancy. And I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick. Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
That's for the other company to get their permission.
Yes.
Do you want me to read the motion again?
I don't like it, but yes.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I need a... Do I need a motion to forward?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, I was getting behind myself. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved. Commissioner Ross.
Support. Commissioner Kreidler?
Okay, I've got a motion and support to adjourn. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carried. Good night, everyone.